Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. This is Alpine Town Council meeting on Tuesday, November 4th at 7:00 PM. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Good evening. Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember, or Mayor Green, Councilmember Weirda.
Here.
Oh, we're all here. You skipped over Andrea Burchard.
I thought I said.
You did, but then you realized that she isn't here.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm here.
You're here. And then Councilmember Skiffidi.
Here.
Mayor Green, you have a quorum of the council with Councilmember Burchard absent and hoping to attend as soon as she can.
Okay, perfect. We have some last-minute adjustments to the agenda, hopefully everyone got that note. We removed the discussion on the fireworks since we have such a big agenda tonight. And also the conversation on the avocation easement. We moved that to a future meeting to go over some more details. So if anyone came to discuss those, thanks for coming and that's no longer on there. But do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. So we will now move into the public hearing portion of the meeting for the liquor license. So I will call this public hearing to order. What we plan on doing is, I appreciate everyone coming, we're just going to, since we do have a long meeting tonight, probably just going to call out the name of the business and if someone's here representing, just raise your hand and so we can just make sure you're here. If anyone would like to make any public comments, we do have a part at the end for public testimony. But so, Madam Clerk, can you tell us if everything is in order with everyone's liquor license application?
Yes, everybody that's on the list has submitted all the information that's required. We have received review confirmations from the Liquor Control Board for all of the applicants, with the exception of Melvin Brewing. They required some additional information about the number of barrels that were produced. They required a report this year. That report has been submitted and Sarah's just waiting for them to review that final report. But we anticipate that being reviewed soon.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the clerk before we start going through this? Okay, so what I'm gonna do is just call out the name of the business and then if someone's here representing, just raise your hand. First is AVR On Inc. I believe that's, oh, Alpine Valley Resort. So I talked to them and they had, no one was available to be here, everyone's out of town. Ridge Creek Investment Company, that's DBA Flying Saddle Resort, thank you. Get Down LLC, which is Melvin Brewing, did anyone come from Melvin, thank you. Get Down has two, one for the microbrewery permit and one for the restaurant liquor license. Del Cabana Del Tequila, okay, thank you. Maraquina LLC, that's La Tiana Mexicana. All right, did anyone come from the Bull Moose? All right. We'll give him, we'll give him his chance. We're getting required if you've never been here before, so sorry. So VR Tavern on the Grays, okay. Yankee Doodle, thank you. Brolums, all right, thank you. And Parkland USA. They came last year, I wish they came again, I still want to talk to them about that. Okay.
And just for the public's information, there is two previous applicants that have not, have elected not to renew their liquor license. One is Driftwood, which we all know has closed as of November, I think the 25th. And then the Ace Hardware.
Right.
Had a liquor license as well. We did just also get a report from the Liquor Control Board with updated information with the new population projections for the town of Alpine, including the new annexed area that brought the Flying Saddle into the town of Alpine. And with those new numbers, the town of Alpine has one retail liquor license available.
When would people need to have their applications in?
To supply a splitter. So I think Sarah and I just need to confirm that process.
Okay.
With them, we just became aware of it at the end of last week and then I was off for a couple days. So now that the meeting's over, her and I need to get with them. And then we'll announce everything on Facebook about when we'll start accepting that, the applications for that.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone want to make any public comments? This would be your chance, since it's your first time, you might as well come. If no one wants to come up, it's fine, just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you wanted to say anything. Thank the town of Alpine for, you know, the opportunity, but that's fine, we'll let, we'll let it slide this time. If there's no questions or anything, I will close the public hearing and we will move on to the consent agenda. And just so you know, the process is we vote later on during the action items to approve all the liquor license. So you're more than welcome to stay until then and make sure everything goes well, but I bet you it is. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, hearing none, consent agenda has passed. Now we'll go into reports and I'll start off, last night was our open house for the master plan and I think it went great. Hopefully, I've recognized a few people that were here last night and so thank you for coming to that. But the comments from the consultants were that the number of people that attended exceeded their expectations. They thought it was great, the conversation was great, answered lots of questions. So I think, yeah, everything really went well and so we're very pleased with that. If there's anyone out there that would like to get more information on what happened at the open house, you can go on our, on our website and it escapes me what it is. It's Alpine-master-plan.com or something like that. Okay, let's go on our website and find it, but there's also something that has all the information that was posted last night that was shown. So if anyone has any questions on that, you can go take a look at that stuff. Anything else on my report, Madam Clerk? Okay, we'll move on to your report.
Primarily, most of my time recently has been, has been spent just wrapping up the utility billing process and I did take a couple days off and that's created just busy work. Do you know what I mean, extra busy work? So we are working on, I am now working on updating the financial policies. A little over a year ago, we had adopted the first step in that. I'm going to, I'm working on accounts receivable policies, making some, a few tweaks to the original vendor in payables policies we've already adopted. Going to be adopting credit card policies and things like that, so that's been my focus of late.
Yeah, any questions for the clerk? All right, thank you. The Public Works Director is actually in Casper today, talking to the State Water Board and I'll let him come and give us a report next meeting on how that went. And is anyone planning and zoning, no one's here from planning and zoning?
He wasn't able to make it.
Okay. And then code enforcement officer submitted theirs in writing, so we're breezing through this. Does anyone have any other reports before we move on?
If I may, just a reminder, Thursday, 6:00 here, it will be Travel and Tourism Fall Meeting. We'd love to have your input because for 2026, the lodging tax goes back to the ballot box. And so I'll be doing kind of a three-year debrief and what the plans are for the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports, comments? Okay, so we will move on to, Kevin, did you have anything you wanted to add even though you don't have official report? If you, yeah, just do real quick, Jesse, bring, bring everyone up to date on that.
Yeah, Kevin Maher with Jorgensen Associates. Wastewater Treatment Plant, the pre-treatment plant, is up and processing water. We've gotten quite a few of the alarms kind of pushed down to where they're not flashing as much and creating some havoc. We've got two concerning spots that y'all are gonna look at, one of the JVA items on, as far as looking at that. So we are processing water, the sludge, this de-watering sludge press is doing amazing. So instead of six loads of water up on a truck, we're doing one load on a dumpster. So it's pretty amazing. Then the Radio Re project, we got the antennas up last week, they turned it on that night and started looking at it and the next morning, they had all but, I think, 13 meters responding back to the antenna and they think those 13 meters were just basically a decimal here, a zero there, kind of a little bit off. Supposed to have training tomorrow on it.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're happy that that's over the finish line. Okay, thank you, Kevin. All right, we'll move on to action items. So first thing on the list, let me do this, is Creative Properties, discussion on extending the sewer or giving them an extension. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the requested water and sewer extension for Creative Properties LLC, lot number 12 of Palisades Heights, 160 Highway 89.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So.
Just for clarification, this is an extension of their permit to connect.
It's a timeframe extension.
Correct.
Yes, it's not where, yeah, not making it longer or something.
Yes, just because it wasn't clear.
Yeah. Is anyone from Creative Properties here to, okay. Mr. Jenkins, tell us, tell us why you're here tonight. Do you mind hitting that button on there? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Dave Jenkins. We would like to, we didn't start building, we have our permit last year for the property, but then we decided that we were gonna try and go through the process of subdividing the property into different pieces. Then we thought we would wait till we got approved for that before we built, just in case didn't get approved or something like that, so that's why we want to ask for the extension.
And what's the timeframe when you think you'll be breaking ground on the next phase?
Well, phase two would be the work live, which hopefully this spring, but we're still trying to figure out the details. So after this, tonight, we'll know, start making some plans.
Okay, what's the statutory requirement on, like, we can, how many extensions can they get?
You know, I don't, I can't, I can't remember, one time, I think, I think I've made it two times in the new ordinance, is that correct?
I think Gina was saying two, but.
Yeah.
It's two in the future?
Yeah.
Yeah. One in the future, so you can get a two-year permit and then you get one.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is a one-year permit and a one-year extension that they can grant, yeah. Which we didn't think was, we edited that in the new ordinance because we feel like for a commercial project, especially a phased commercial project or something, two years is not unreasonable.
So what happens if we don't get it finished in the next year, what happens next?
That's what we need to figure out, but I think the ordinance probably lays that out, doesn't it? The new ordinance?
The existing ordinance, which he applied under, states that he has to reapply and pay the fees again.
If, if it expires.
So water and sewer and permit or?
Water and sewer.
Just the water and sewer?
Yeah, so you'll want.
So if we paid $10,000 per building for, you know, whatever it is, we have to pay that again?
Whatever the new rates would be, yeah. So you have basically a year from whenever the extension is to essentially.
So does that mean just to get started or does that mean to be done?
That's a question.
That's to connect to the building.
So as long as we get it connected within the next year?
To get it to, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think you should.
And I think that's probably reasonable because you tend to put that types of infrastructure in.
But as far as the construction goes, we don't have to be finished in a year, right?
No.
Just your building permit, whatever requirements are on that. But yeah, I think, I think it's in your best interest to get that going in the next year so you don't have to come back another time.
Perfect.
Any questions for Mr. Jenkins while we have him here? Is there a fee associated with an extension?
It's been paid. It was $200, $100 for each.
Thank you.
Yeah, $300.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of said motion granting Creative Properties an extension on their water and sewer hookups, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, and I apologize, I should have said this sooner. I'm abstaining from voting on Creative Properties only because I have a professional relationship with the applicant and Creative Properties is my broker's landlord, so just in the interest of transparency, I'm just abstaining.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I'm going to abstain as well, but now that we only have.
It can still be decided unless you go nay. It's still, it can be approved, because really it's the council and mayor and whether the council's three, we can do it.
Okay, so three, so two, okay.
Unless.
Jonathan, does that sound right to you?
Where do votes nay?
Okay, okay, so I'm abstaining as well, so it sounds like it's two out of three and it passed. Correct? Okay, done. Next is the Creative Properties Special Use Permit and do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Special Use Permit SUP for Creative Properties LLC, allowing the phased development of the proposed project as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission based upon the conditions outlined in the suggested SUP permit and adherence to all applicable provisions of the town of Alpine's LUDC.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. Marlo, you're here.
I am.
Well, you better hit the button one more time because you just turned it off, there you go.
Oh, red is on.
Your red is on.
Excuse me, I forget that. I'm used to green.
So do you want to, do you want to tell us about? So do you want to, do you want to tell us about this and why this is being brought?
Matt, you want to bring it up?
Yeah, let me, let me, if you tell me what.
I'm gonna hand out an addendum. In working with your planning and zoning administrator, we're also doing this in phases.
Attachment five.
Attachment five.
Is a flat map.
Do we have some additional information?
Thank you, Marlo.
You can leave one more for Councilmember Bertrand, too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So can you start off and just give us the background on the Special Use Permit application?
Can. So this is a project that's actually partially under construction. You've been giving building permits or have given building, a building permit. The developers with Creative Properties would like to be able to divide this in the future. So the division is what we would call a townhouse division, not condominium. So it would be, there's six different units in this particular one. Unit one is the apartment building.
Which is here.
Which is there.
Existing.
Units two, three, and four would be live-work units. And units five and six are commercial spaces. When you do a townhouse division, basically, the person owns the footprint underneath the building. You don't, underneath the building. And then they will have some limited common elements in here that are mostly the parking spaces, decks, things like that. And in general, common elements, as you see here, the biggest one is the driveway and, and other areas where utilities would be. So because we want to be able to have this divided in the future, that's why we started down a preliminary plot and a master plan report, which hopefully you have in your packets. The Special Use Permit is, is, is it kind of a new option in the town? And as I looked at it and looked at your ordinance, it, it allows, this particular lot lacks seven hundredths of an acre of being one acre, which is what a PUD requires. And so back when this was plotted, which is the 1980s, I was much younger when we did this one, but nobody knew what the rules would be in the future. And so this particular commercial one, I mean, had we known, and my crystal ball was not dark, we would have said, oh, maybe we ought to make these acre, because there's gonna be a rule in 19, in 2000 or whenever it was, it's gonna change. Well, because we don't know those things, I think this Special Use Permit ordinance allows for those minor modifications. So what we're really looking at is the site plan. Does it work? Do we really need that seven hundredths of an acre? Do we have enough parking? Do we have enough snow removal? Can we get the utilities, the driveways, et cetera? And so that's why it's coming before you. The only change is the seven hundredths. Because as you see the site, if you bring that back up, you'll notice that we have plenty of parking. It's, Brett Bennett's worked on the design of this, and it all fits your, your rules and the, and requirements of the Town of Alpine, except for that minimum size of one acre for a planned unit development or a PUD. So actually, I think it was a good foresight by the town to have this particular option available because there are gonna be things like that that nobody thought about 30, 40 years ago. And adjusting a lot line may not be applicable, or, and it may not be needed. Seven hundredths here probably isn't necessarily needed, but someone picked the magic number of one, and when we changed our ordinances last. So that's kind of the background of why we're here, why we're here with a Special Use Permit. The other thing that we would like to do is a phased development. So the first phase, and you can see in that addendum that I just handed out, has a little more detail that your planning administrator wanted to see to our original application. One is just letting him know that, like in paragraph one on the first page, the developer requests authorization for phased subdivision approval consistent with the Special Use Permit and, and the master plan. And so we would have three final plots in this case. One would accompany, phase one is going to be unit one.
Which is already built.
Which is already constructed. And you can see some of that is in the infrastructure phasing down at the bottom of the page, top of the second page, and I'll go through some of those items. But phase one is unit one. It's already constructed. It's already hooked up to sewer and water. Phase two will be units two, three, and four, the live-work units. And phase three, and if you look at the map on the back of what I handed you, we've color-coded those three phases for you. The blue is, you know, is phase one. The green is phase two, and the pink is phase three. So the commercial units up front would be in the last phase. We've also requested some conditions in the phasing, and I'll tell you why we're thinking what we're thinking. So the phase one is done, and so we would be filing that final plot, assuming we get some approval tonight, fairly quickly, towards the end of this year, early next year, because things are done, ready to go. Phase two, we would expect to get that started in the spring of '26, so next spring. And we would record a final plot, or request to record a final plot in two years from the time we get approval for the final plot application. Now, when you think about two years, getting a final plot doesn't take quite that long, but in these cases, we've got to build the structures first. They, they have to be built because they're townhouses, so they're really not sold until they're actually ready to be occupied. Construction takes a little longer than me just making a plot. And we requested a two-year, just, I don't know. It, it takes quite a while to get building done these days, has been my observation. So we've given ourselves a little buffer.
Yep.
Hopefully, we could have that within the two-year space. It's constructed and ready to get a final plot approved, so any sale of those individual units could happen. Phase three, the plan is to start that construction in the spring of 2031. And again, two years for construction before we file the final plot. Now, these suggestions are, you don't actually have in your ordinance anything about phasing. Gina sent us a proposal, I think, that you're gonna be looking at in the future, which we're basically matching, except we've looked at these time periods. In this particular case, the two years makes sense because of construction needs. If you look at the infrastructure and when we're doing it, so with phase one, which is unit one, everything's in. And the access and driveway loop has been roughed in, so it's usable. In phase two, which starts next spring, we would add sewer and water service lines and hookups for units two, three, and four. And you can see, if you look on your map, too, there's, this is the proposed water, come back to these units. The sewer hits your main out in here, and so everything's likely to go over here. And this is already hooked in to this water to this unit, and this water will come later in phase three, which we see on our narrative there. So in phase two, the drainage basin, which is down in the southwest corner, would be constructed during phase two for all phases. And then we would improve the driveway and loop access with gravel, so it's ready for asphalt. We want to make sure that asphalt's kind of at the end of this, or you kind of destroy it if you start running big trucks on it before you get finished with construction. And so during phase two, that access would be gravelled, ready for asphalt. Then there'd be landscaping for units two, three, and four during that phase. Phase three then would be the hookups for the units five and six. And we would finish the asphalt on the driveway and parking areas.
One point I wanted to ask you about that, and this is like, kind of an internal thing, and it, a lot of it depends on the building official, but when the asphalt needs to go in and could determine when a certificate of occupancy is given, is what we've found. So I think you need to keep that in mind and work with the building official to make sure we're all on the same page there.
Yeah.
Because we've just ran into it within the past year of a project that wasn't asphalted, and there was some question whether or not that was within the international building code. So.
So you're, you're indicating that asphalt needs to be done before occupancy, or do we know that?
We need to talk about it. Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not telling you need to do anything. That's why we have a building.
Not up on that rule, but yeah, I'm sure that our contractors will be, and, and Dave will be watching that to make sure that we fit everything that your inspectors are gonna look at. Landscaping last in units five and six of phase three. Hopefully, everything wrapped up then. And with that, you've seen the exhibit. The last thing that we're noting is the master plan authorizes phased development consistent with the approved Special Use Permit, and this addendum that's added to it. And the reason there's an addendum tonight, and you haven't seen it in your packet, is because the town is catching up, and we're catching up with the town to get this phasing thing kind of moving forward.
Yeah.
We do that in the county quite a bit with, with phased projects, and it makes a lot of sense, especially to test the market sometimes. If you don't, sometimes you just fall flat on your faces as a developer, and that's hard to take. The plot is approved for phased, final plating in accordance with this Special Use Permit. Final plots will be filed by phase and shown on the approved. So what would happen, I, in my mind, and you guys are gonna be putting this together, would be as we're ready for a phase, like unit one, come in fairly quickly, make an application. We'd have a final plot that's reviewed, I believe, both by planning and zoning, and then this council sign it. And assuming it all gets approved, it would then get filed in the courthouse. And then it's, it's eligible to be sold. They can put a deed once you have a plot file. Phase two would be the same thing. Spring of '26, we'd make the application. They would get the buildings done, and in that two-year period before that was up, or we came back for an extension if for some reason it was taking us longer, then we would have a final plot ready for units two, three, and four. Same thing for phase three, if you could follow through with that, there would be a final plot done. Properties can't be sold until those plots are approved by this body and recorded in the courthouse.
Right.
At the clerk's office. So with that, I'm open to any questions. If I missed anything, Mr. Mayor, let me.
No, thanks.
Let me know what else I can fill in on.
Does anyone have any questions for Marlo, while we've got him?
Yeah, so we're converting this multi-use lot into individual townhomes to be sold, and it's, it's governed as an HOA?
There will be an HOA.
So the Alpine Heights.
And we have changed the name, by the way. I forgot to mention that. It's, it is Alpine Heights. In the previous, it was called Lakeview something. I've forgotten because I'm used to the new name now. Anyway, the final name is Alpine Heights.
Okay.
So that's correct.
Okay, so then I guess I'm wondering, on unit one, which is six apartments, then those will be sold as townhomes?
Yes.
Okay, so you're just gonna sell it as one.
One apartment complex.
Six blocks.
Okay.
Six blocks. There you go. That's a good way to say it.
Okay, I just feel like I've never seen this in town. So this is a new one.
This is a new one for sure, and we've, just so everyone knows that we've, because of this and other projects recent that have come up for a planned unit development, we've talked to the consultants today about it, and I think this is something that, it's a little bit of a gap that we have in our land use development code, and we keep finding gaps all the time. And so if this body decides that we want to pay someone to refresh our land use development code, that this is something, the planned unit development process and everything, just, we need to, it needs to be thought out, because we haven't done many of these. But the Special Use Permit, in my mind, this is what it was made for. Like, this is pretty cut and dry. The, what it's zoned for and what it wants to be, our land use development code doesn't allow for it. But it's restricting the property to its highest use, basically, if we don't do this process. Is that your opinion?
One other observation, though, is it's an MRC, so uses are allowed in that MRC. So we're not creating anything new for uses in the zoning.
But dividing up a lot.
Dividing is, is, yeah, just having individual ownership. I, I don't see that as, as mutually exclusive or anything. It's just if some, one person, and, and look at this for the investment. If you're to go to sell all six units at once, that's a big project for one person to buy it up. You're in the real estate business, you understand that, and others, I mean, it just is. And so being able to put that into smaller pieces for different uses even, a lot of times, it's all the same use. It's all a, you know, all townhouses to live in, residential. In this case, with a mix, this could be that way, and it could all just be rented and not ever divided. But the division allows a couple of things in my mind. One, it's an exit plan for the developer. And two, we have found that individual ownership tends to equate to better ownership rather than just tenants all the time.
I know. People just, people give us grief on, you know, having attainable housing, and so it's one of those things. But I'm not, I, I think my last question to you, is any of this covered parking, or is it all just open parking in front of the townhomes? I can't tell.
Brett, can you come and answer that? You designed this. I believe some, it's a little bit of both, but I'll let Brett.
Great, just because that's one thing I really like when developers actually give people space to put their things or park or.
Understood. Brett Bennett, Alpine Architectural Studio. So it is outdoor surface parking, with the exception of the live-work units. So units two, three, and four have large bay garages, but in parking standards, that equates to two spaces per unit. So six spaces covered garage, and then the spaces out front are partially covered by the decks above. That's what those little rectangles are. But that helps us achieve the guest parking requirement or for people to stage as needed, because those are permitted as IRC live-work units.
Okay.
And so they are a bit of a blend of uses, but fully lined out in the IRC. Sprinklers, the ground floor has to be accessible. There has to be an accessible bathroom downstairs. That's all in there. We, we submitted a permit set for those, and this.
That's two covered parking spaces per unit.
That's correct. Two indoor garage spaces per unit, and then the outdoor spaces are partially covered.
Awesome.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Or the, the plot is based on a site plan that was approved with the live-work units.
Yeah, this is not the first time you've seen this site plan, I don't think, and the planning and zoning, as it's gone through the process. Other questions? Good questions, say. Have I answered your questions?
Yeah, that's just one of the things I always, I always appreciate if someone will give someone to have space for a car or their, their belongings.
In this country, garages are premium.
They're usually twice the size of the house, is what we.
Well, they become storage units, too, I understand, but with the winter we have, you tend to like to have things inside, especially vehicle. At least that's what I learned after 20 years of not having a garage, so in the first 20 years I was here.
Anyone have any more questions for Marlo, while I'm here?
I'll take it from Marlo now.
Yeah, thank you, Marlo. My feeling on this is I, I love the fact that a small business could come in and buy each one of these units. The live-work units, more opportunities for small businesses to have a fair shake in town. And it's what we end up talking about a lot with the consultants, and there's not enough opportunities for small businesses here. So to me, this makes a lot of sense. So to me, this makes a lot of sense. But yeah, I'm glad we have the tool to make it happen. We'll fix that at some point, but for right now, this is really the only way that we can make this happen, in my opinion. But any other comments, questions?
Well, this is, yeah, you're filling a niche for sure with live-work. And then I'm always in favor of a zone project where I still have a clear remembrance of the Great Recession.
Yeah.
So...
And I will say that when I first, when this was first brought forward, it made me think of Mark Severson and the project that he did a few years ago. And the differentiation in my mind on that was that he built them and then came to us to subdivide them. And so I just appreciate that the developers coming before and subdividing, and so we know what's going to happen with the project. So although we passed that a couple of years ago for Mr. Severson, I appreciate that this is being brought forward early in the process. But yeah, thank you for your comments.
And can I just make one?
Yes.
I'm just gonna say the same thing I just said on the last vote. Creative properties is my broker's landlord and in the interest of transparency and to remain above reproach, I believe it is appropriate to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, all those in favor of said motion regarding this special use permit for creative properties, say aye.
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 And abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain for me as well. So motion carries. Next, we have the water, adoption of the water master plan, I believe. Let's see, yep. Thanks, you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the Alpine Water Master Plan, MP Level 1 Study Executive Summary and the Alpine Water MP Level 1 Study.
Second?
We have a motion, it's been seconded, any discussion? Madam Clerk, we're, this is being brought to us, essentially, we just need to accept the findings from the master plan, the water master plan, correct?
That's correct at this time. It's just an acceptance that we've received it. And I do think Councilmember Weirda has discussed before, and Craig's not here in this meeting, but I do think there's some probably further discussions that need to happen about the capital project process and all of those things. But I think we can work through them moving forward.
Just as a reminder, this was, how much of this was paid by the state?
A hundred percent.
Yeah, so this was paid for by the state and if anyone, I'm not gonna click on this, it's 55 megabytes, but it's like hundreds of pages, so, but the summary is like 12 pages. But if anyone's really excited about a water master plan, I encourage you to download all 200 pages and read it. But there was some conversation at the master plan last, or the open house last night regarding the master plan for the comprehensive plan. And a lot of people, or some people were talking about water and does the town have enough water? And I encourage them to find this document and read it and understand because this lays out really succinctly what water we have available to us and it's plentiful, for sure. So the suggestion of hooking up the mega well to the whole system is beneficial to the town, for sure. So hopefully, we can make that happen. But anyways, any other discussion questions? All right.
Is it possible for Sunrise to go back and retake a picture of our new welcome sign?
Yeah, we need to put that on the front. It's, yeah. It, I'll show everyone in the audience here, but it would be nice to replace that with our new welcome sign, but we'll see if we can make that happen. All right, all those in favor of motion, let's see, all those in favor of Alpine Water MP Level 1 Study Executive Summary and Alpine Water MP Level 1 Study, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Next is the workers' compensation.
Question on that?
Yes.
Is it on the website now and in public knowledge?
Yeah.
Download that and enjoy it.
Yeah, go for it. It's on our website, so, yep.
Yeah, you're outside, Marlo. The mayor said it's a great 200-page read.
Yeah, you should definitely download it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
All right, next is the workers' compensation, safety, and risk analysis.
A motion to accept the workers' compensation, safety, and risk analysis.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. Madam Clerk, can you just give us the background on this and why it's being brought in front of us?
Yeah, so the workers' comp has sent us multiple mailings inquiring about whether we were interested in participating in this process, which will allow for a reduction in our workers' compensation rates. Just inviting them in to do this initial evaluation gets us, I think, a 3% reduction. However, they have an even greater plan and process to make workplaces more safe. They will provide training and support. However, so Craig and I, a few weeks ago, met with their safety person and then he, Craig took them on a tour throughout our facilities and the report that you have is the results. And so now myself, the mayor, and Craig need to address some of the concerns that are, were found in the report. And I mean, it's been, it was a very positive, it's a very positive experience. It's nice to have somebody come in who doesn't see the same things every day and just see it in a different, they see it in a completely different way than we see it, so. But there is a little bit of work to do.
Yep. Now, yeah, we need to take action and then it'll end up saving us even more money on our work in the future.
Yeah, they give us until November 26th or, if it's a larger project, we can request an extension, so they'll, they'll support us in any way they can.
Okay, any questions, comments on this? All right, all those in favor of motion for, to accept the workers' compensation, safety, and risk analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing done, motion carries. Next, we're going into the liquor license renewals. And I do see that the Tienda La Mexicana is now here, so...
I'm listening to the livestream as well, if that counts.
Okay, that counts. And we appreciate you showing up. What we're gonna try to do is get these all in one motion, if that's fine with everyone. We'll try to handle it all at once. So do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the renewal of liquor licenses for the following businesses contingent upon receipt of final review from the State Liquor Division. AVR On Inc., DBA Alpine Valley Resort County Malt Beverage Permit. Ridge Creek Investment Company, DBA Flying Saddle Resort Retail Liquor License. Get Down LLC, DBA Melvin Brewing Company, Microbrewery Permit. Get Down LLC, DBA Melvin Brewing Company Restaurant Liquor License. Lacabana Del Tequila LLC Restaurant Liquor License. Marquina, oh, I almost messed up. Marquina, is that right? Marquina? No?
Marquina?
Marquina. Marquina, thank you. LLC DBA Tienda La Mexicana Restaurant Liquor License. Rocky Mountain Rogues Inc., DBA Bull Moose Saloon Retail Liquor License. VR Tavern on the Grays LLC Retail Liquor License. Yankee Doodles LLC DBA Red, White, and Brew Restaurant Liquor License. Brolum Supermarkets LLC DBA Alpine Brolums Retail Liquor License. Parkland USA Corporation DBA On the Run County Malt Beverage Permit.
Nice, second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Thank you for that.
Well done.
Councilman Larson, it's a mouthful. Discussion. Madam Clerk, so obviously, we had the hearing tonight. Is it your understanding that everyone has thoroughly done what's required so we can do this next part?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Any questions, comments? This would be a chance for anyone in the room that wanna make a comment that showed up? All right. All those in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations. All right, next is the Alpine Pretreatment Facility Design Assessment by JVA. Do we have a motion?
Motion to, oh, yeah, motion to accept the Alpine Pretreatment Facility Design Assessment by JVA Inc.
Second?
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. Let me bring this up. It's also printed out, you guys should have this. The background on this is we would like to pay an engineer to essentially go over the, what's happened at the pretreatment plant, the design and everything, and give us an assessment of what's been happening down there. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct. Kevin, I don't know if you have a better explanation.
That would be helpful, thank you.
So it's kind of broken down into two different things. One, where we get the effluent from the new MBR, which is the pretreatment plant. And then the other existing MBR system is on gravity fed versus pressure. And we're having problems with where they were located at in the actual design by Cambrian. So we're having problems with that that we're having to manually work through. So that's one item. The other item is the dewatering press for the sludge, is the volume of water that's going back to the pretreatment plant. It can't accept the dewatering press working at the same time that Melvin's is working and the same time the MBR is working and the same time that the town is working. So he's been having to do it at three and four-hour increments and pretty soon, come say May, we're not gonna have time to do that.
Yeah. And the fear is that there might be some design flaws that we need to look at.
Yes.
We really need a third party to tell us that.
That's correct.
So in my opinion, I was actually pleasantly surprised at the price.
Yeah, me too.
For the engineering for this, for them to come and look at it. I was very, almost thankful that it was only that much because we've obviously worked with them in the past with JVA. So any questions for Kevin while we have him?
So it says them visiting isn't included in the 10,000.
No, because they've been at the plant several times.
Okay, so they don't have to come back.
Yes, and they actually helped us with the design where there was a hole in the design.
Okay.
As far as the Rio panel, this relay input. So they've already been out here two times already.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be a lot of us giving them the data, the information that they request to feed their, or their study.
And to verify the volumes and the flows and those kind of things, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so the goal is they're gonna find XYZ, come up with XYZ suggestions, and then we can go back to Cambrian and say, we're not on putting this facility completely online until these things are addressed? Is that...
Yeah, well...
What's the end goal here?
That may be, yeah, what comes of it. And obviously, the intention is to spend this money to improve the entire process, whatever that means. But yeah, we don't want to just spend this money to have a study done. We want to take action on it, so...
Right, it's an opportunity for the town to logically go into Cambrian and say, we've seen these two faults and you designed this, what are you gonna do about it? And if they don't do anything about it, it's a notice of compliance and it's a known to, warranty work.
Right.
Yeah, and I honestly, I think stopping right now at this point and asking these questions will be much less expensive than to just keep pressing forward without a real solution.
Yeah, agreed. We could get too far down the road and then it's...
And then it could just cost more money to them.
Way too far gone.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of, sorry, I'm lost. The motion is to, all those in favor of the Alpine Pretreatment Facility Design Assessment by JVA Inc., say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing done, motion carries. All right, next is the utility procedure ordinance on first reading. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 2025-012 Utility Procedure Ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. Madam Clerk, this is, the document has now gone over by you and Craig and Melody. Councilmember Weirda, you've had input on this.
Kevin was involved.
Kevin was involved. I skimmed through it, I didn't spend as much time as you guys did, but I saw the previous version as well, so I like the formatting, it makes sense.
That was Sarah.
Yeah, and Sarah did the formatting. So this is, just in general, can you lay out the reason for this ordinance and what it's replacing or what it's doing?
So our current ordinance defines what the fees are. It actually wraps the fees into the ordinance as well. And our goals here were to pull all of the procedural language into its own ordinance, reference the fees that we will be charging, and adopt a separate fee ordinance so that that way in the future, the town doesn't have to look at this cumbersome, very large document and edit that every time you're going to adjust a fee. And so you'll just be looking at the fee ordinance. There were some other things that we approached while we were doing that, like there used to be an ordinance in place in the town of Alpine that allowed wells to be used for irrigation that were already in existence. So to be clear, somebody cannot come to us who's in the town of Alpine and say, I want to drill an irrigation well. That is not allowed. But if they already have one, and it used to be that there was an ordinance that allowed it and had a permit process, but that ordinance sunsetted, which means it went away. And so those wells continue. And so we revived that as well. So the other thing that we did is we took the responsibility for excavation out of the town's hands. And so instead of, in the event that somebody's putting in water and sewer to a property and there already isn't lines from main to curb, right now, we have to hire a contractor or historically, the guys have done that. It costs the town like thousands and thousands more than they were collecting in fees. And so by, we're shifting responsibilities, all those responsibilities of excavating to the property owner as well and requiring them to do it to our specifications that were written and adopted previously by the town council. What else did I miss? I mean, there's, there's a lot of little cleanup things that's happened through them.
This also says, for example, like the ERUs are 25 fixture units.
Yes.
And things like that, that's, there's a lot of definitions in here that we didn't necessarily have.
Yeah, well, historically, there was a chart that was utilized to determine what, how much somebody paid in sewer connection fees. It was a very limited, narrow view of what's going on. And so it needed to be broader and so we took the recommendations of Jorgensen, who see this throughout multiple municipalities across Wyoming. And that it's just a very consistent, uniformed way of assessing ERUs by fixture unit. So it's a good determining factor by determining how, where the water fixtures are, that that will determine how much flow you have in the sewer.
It takes the question out of determining...
It makes it really fair.
Yep, and it's, they come to us, they say, we tell them, this is how you calculate it, they tell us how many fixtures they have, and then it determines how many ERUs it are, it is, and that's it. So it's really plain, so, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for this?
Yeah, I've got a couple of little...
Yep.
Questions or notes. And first of all, thank you I was able to be involved in this process, read through this, what, about four, four different revisions, look at it with new eyes, say, hey, I see holes or I don't understand this. So it was a good learning process for myself and I think for the staff to...
Yes, thank you.
Hear questions that were kind of coming out of...
Yeah.
You know, coming out of nowhere.
We appreciate you looking at it.
It was helpful, it was helpful.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, if you want to scroll to page 11, I guess. It talks about, the heading is just additional sewer regulations. Is that referring to... it talks about, the heading is just additional sewer regulations. Is that referring to both sides of the sewer system? And the reason I ask is just a little bit farther down, it talks about any waters or ways having a pH lower than 5.5 or above 8.5, um, are not allowed in the system. So how does that tie in with what particular flavor Melvin is dumping down the drain?
Yeah, and so there is an additional sewer ordinance, and that, that language, did you add that language or was that in the original one? You might have to speak to that.
Yeah, some of this was already part of it. And with Melvin's, it's actually coming in within the very bottom of this range, which is actually good for the wastewater pre-treatment plant. But that gets into industrial use fees that we're also looking at as hard as that.
We're, we're working on that as a totally separate ordinance, um, industrial users. Um, does that answer your question?
It does, yes.
Yeah, this would be really for like a garage or a mechanics or somebody painting a building or, you know, powder coating, those kinds of things, that they'll have some chemicals that they use that you basically can't just dump it down the drain.
Gotcha. And then right on that same section, you know, it just says prohibited discharges, and then the long list. Later on in the document, it does give fees for different, um, different actions, but it doesn't feel cohesive. So yeah, somebody's dumping paint or poison down the drain. I don't know that the, the penalties are necessarily matching the dis- you know, the prohibited.
Is a fee still left in there? Did I miss that?
There's 750 dollar fee in there.
Oh, cause that should be in the other ordinance if it's listed in there. So, my apologies.
Down in section 15 is where that is. So just a little consistency there, and then.
Uh, we'll tweak it for the second reading. Thank you, Amy, for finding that.
Um, and then my only thing on page 15 of this document, um, and I don't know if this is a comment for this or one of the following ones. There's a voluntary disconnection reconnection of water service note, and it says that. I can't find it now. It says that there's an, a reconnect fee, but that is not listed in the fee schedule at all.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
That's a good catch. I think we do, we do want to remove that 700.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm a good catch.
And, um, just so we're all on the same page, I think a lot of those, um, suggestions could be made for the second reading.
Oh, okay.
We don't have to make an adem- amendment right now.
Okay.
But, I mean, you're open, you're welcome to if you want, but I think it's something that we can.
No, no, no. I just, yeah, I wanted to bring that, bring that all up.
Okay. Um, any other questions? I know this was a heavy lift, so thank you for everyone that was involved. It's.
Honestly, it took a team.
Yeah, it does.
It really was teamwork here, so.
All right. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of, um, ordinance number 2025 dash 012, utility procedure ordinance on first reading, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Um, ordinance passed on first reading. Next is 2025 dash 014, capacity fee ordinance. Do we have a motion?
Motion? Go ahead.
Sorry. Motion, uh, to approve first reading of ordinance number 2025 dash 014, capacity fee ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion. Um, it sounds like we've already found a, just a couple of things we have to make sure that we add to this, right?
And this is just towards development?
Oh, this is capacity.
This is capacity.
Okay.
So this is, this is development.
Yep.
Yes. Yeah, and so, um, the ordinance and the, uh, general gist of it, it was reformatted into our, our format, but the, it was written by Raftellus.
Right. This is Raftellus. This is what we paid them for to develop this ordinance for us, and, um, all the language is, is done by them, and then we just made sure it was in the form that we like. And, um, yeah, does anyone have any questions? Um, we don't have talk from Raftellus available, but, um, I, I don't think he is necessarily needed for this discussion, but, um, C utility rate ordinance. Okay, so that's, this is the language, and then the fees are set in the fee ordinance, correct?
Correct. And, and, and just because you have it there, there is that meter fee ra- that meter ratio. Um, I actually utilized there the same ratio that they utilized in, in our fee ordinance. So I kept that ratio for three quarter inch. It's consistent in, in both, because I know some of the, the initial information that we had worked on with Jorgensen. There, there is different ratios. But we spent all that money for Raftellus to, um, do all that work, and so I went with.
No.
With their recommendations.
Yeah, I agree.
So that was done by them.
Does anyone have any questions for Monica or any other? We could ask Kevin if anyone had any questions on this.
Well, I think we went over it pretty well when Raftellus was here.
Yep.
Going over everything.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of ordinance number 2025 dash 014, capacity fee ordinance on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Um, ordinance carried on first reading. Um, last but not least is ordinance number 2025 dash 013, utility rate ordinance on first reading.
Make a motion to approve first reading, ordinance number 2025 dash 013, utility rate ordinance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Uh, discussion.
Oh, can someone, I have to apologize. I didn't ask this sooner. The monthly fire suppression readiness to serve.
So that's new, and, and I'm open to you guys' suggestions and, and, uh, however, I think, um, in, and I, I do have historical experience in municipalities that both meter and charge monthly fees for fire services. Um, and I understand that we want commercial and industrial businesses to have them. We want them to be able to afford to protect their businesses. However, um, currently and historically, businesses are collect, connecting large service lines, um, to a hotel or to other large facilities, and they're not paying any fees at all. They're running the line from main to curb at, at no cost, and then they're connecting it in. There's no meter on it. I'm not, and, and nothing that we've done has, has required them to meter that service. It can be very expensive. The larger meters are more expensive. Um, however, um, and it's really up to you where you guys want to go with it or, or how you want to do this. However, I think we need to look at it as we, they have connected that line, and they have the capacity to draw large amounts of water from our system. It allows them to have their commercial entity. They would not be able to, 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 in many cases, build the building without it, without those fire suppression services. And so I don't think it's a lot to ask that they pay something for that service, but I don't know what that is. I just, in the course of drafting this, kept it consistent with the, with the base rates. Um, but that's truly up to you now. But you need to consider that the people who have fire pers- sus- res-. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, they have larger lines. They don't have a three quarter inch water service.
Cause I was, I kind of want to exclude single family homes. Like, I really think to charge someone an additional fee on a single family home would be.
Well, like how many single family homes have water suppression?
I know, but if it's on the books.
Maybe, I don't know.
I mean, with this, a single family home, does that, is that a 10,000 square foot home, which would definitely have a, well, hopefully would have a fire suppression?
I don't know if we have a lot. I don't think we have a lot big enough to put it.
In Teton County, it's like anything over 5,000 square feet or something, isn't it?
New code is like 2,600, but they push it out.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, this was new to me as well, but I mean, it makes sense from the standpoint that, um, I don't know what the rate should be, but if.
I agree.
If they have, if they have the, um, the service hooked up and the, they have to pay something for the possibility that they end up using this. Now, if, if it's not metered, how, how is that? You're saying it wouldn't be metered?
No, it's not metered. So in the event that their, their facility catches on fire, they get their water for free. They don't pay the per gallon charge. They're just paying the monthly service fee. So, I mean, if, if, if a hotel would catch fire and they'd use, you know, 20, 30,000 gallons, they're not paying for it.
Yeah.
Um, they, they don't pay for it now, and they're not going to pay for it in the future.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting they pay for water to put out a fire.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think so either. But it's interesting because, um, the water, having this, um, capability on a commercial building, it's just sitting there. I mean, hopefully it never gets used.
I agree with.
All this is, is almost like an insurance policy.
Yes.
Gives them the opportunity.
But the town of Alpine has built the infrastructure to provide that service. And that's, that's the way I look at it. So it is a fire pers- sus- spr- uh, I cannot do that. I did it the first time, just fine. Um, but perhaps you want to discount that, like to half of what a base rate would. I, that's up to you. You can be flexible. This is new. Um, you know, but I, I, it, it's just something that they, they should pay something towards the infrastructure that everybody else has paid to install.
Want that captured on the.
Favors law connection.
They don't pay capacity fees on a fire, but.
On a fire suppression, they don't.
No. That, yeah, that seems, that also seems.
I think I'm gonna research.
Bad, yeah.
I'll research before the next meeting.
Sounds like a.
Yeah, we need to.
Thank you.
We need to figure that out. And I, I agree, we need to look at the cost. Um, I, I can't imagine someone having an eight inch line, especially residential. I mean, it just doesn't even make sense. Um, the commercial, I mean, maybe two inch or something. Um, I don't know what's needed for fire suppression. Maybe Kevin, do you have some information on that?
So, uh, yeah, the latest hotel that was just put in, they ran a six inch line off of an eight inch line that the town has. And then they, here in town.
Uh huh.
And then they split a four inch going into the, the fire system. They've got a three inch going into their building. So they've got a four inch main running right into their building.
Yeah.
To carry that much. So, and without that, they couldn't get insurance, they couldn't build it.
Right.
So, I mean, the town is supporting them to make money in a sense. So, and you could also look at it residential versus commercial. You could say, okay, commercial is this and residential is that.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, that makes sense. But, um, I don't have any problem passing on first reading, but I think we need to do some more research and, um, see if we can figure out what's reasonable and what other towns municipalities have done.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I kind of have something I wanted to read. Um, and I guess I was hoping more people would be here tonight for their water sewer rate hikes. Um, I want to express concern about the proposed rate hike for our town's water and sewer services. While I understand that periodic adjustments are sometimes necessary, we just had a rate hike in 2022, now we're revisiting. Um, to keep up with maintenance and operating costs, this particular increase appears to stem from cost overruns tied to the pre-treatment plant project. A project that reportedly exceeded its budget by over a million dollars in addition to the 2 million to build it. I don't feel like it's reasonable or fair for residents to absorb the additional costs resulting from something they had no, I guess, say about, and that was contracted for a private business use. Um, I know one day you guys were hoping that breweries or distillers could tie into the pre-treatment plant, but for the time being, I can't look anyone in the town and say to them, they should be paying 25% higher for water and sewer as everyone's budgets are fully stretched, and we don't even know what's coming in the new year. Um, one idea, and I always, I drive these guys crazy, but I feel like we should be moving to the, the civic center. This is $5,000 a month in rent. I also believe that our commercial, commercial property taxes are not assessed properly, which I have shared with Monica. So I'm doing a deep dive. We have a very large discrepancy on commercial property tax assessment. So in my hope, my hope is we could give single family residences a break on the rest of the dynamic. I'm good for that, but that would be my change. If I vote no, that is why.
Appreciate that. Um, we have talked at length about, um, raising these fees. Um, you know, we do have a budget shortfall, um, in the water and sewer. It's hard to determine exactly what the shortfall is in both from the standpoint that until the pre-treatment plant gets off our books, you know, we, until we have all these bills coming, stop coming through, we, we really don't know kind of what it's going to cost to operate it and, and all that. So I understand your concerns.
Yeah.
Um, and honestly, I, I think that if this passes on first reading, that I would like to do some more research on, and work with Monica and figure out, really nail down on what the operating costs are and where our shortfalls are. Are they gonna start to get cleared off our books in the near future? Um, so, uh, I think we can do that before the next reading.
Yeah, and I think, I think water, um, I, I actually looked at it after our conversation today. And in truth, um, I projected in the, in the budget, raising the rates by 15%. And even with that increase, we would have had a shortfall last year's of $16,000 in water. Um, they recommend, and Kevin, you may have to help me, they recommend charging what, 10% more than your operating costs? Is that correct?
Um, 20%.
Okay.
And then they actually say up to 30%, the closer you get to the bubble to the north. Just because it's harder to get people and funds and labor, that kind of thing.
So just to clarify, whatever the operating costs are.
We should have, we should be collecting at least 20% more.
Okay, so that's something.
And we haven't looked at that specifically, although.
Right.
The, the studies did.
Right. So if you, Midwest Assistance Program went through and looked at that. So if you are, as an enterprise fund, which is sitting there at, say, exactly even, you just funded, no more, no less, anything happens, you don't have any money to take care of those things. A major leak, a major something, or big projects that are coming down the line.
Yep.
So you just don't have any money to take care of those things. So that's what that extra 20% is for.
Yeah, and my, my, uh, and, and so on the third rating of whatever's passed, we will, I will be submitting also that meeting a resolution to, um, fundamentally adjust the way that we account for this. Because with the capacity fees, um, if you look at the rates, our, our connection fees, the cost that it costs the town to connect, drop way down. Um, because we don't have as much involvement in that connection anymore. And so then, but all the capacity fees will, will not be in the actual operating budget.
But they'll be for the rainy day.
And, yeah, exactly.
They're more for capital projects.
Yeah.
Improving, expanding the.
Yes, for capital projects.
Essentially have to replace lines, pumps.
Right.
Um, computer systems.
Yeah, and so what, what that does, when you look at what's happened historically, those connection fees have kept the rates where they are.
And I think what I'll do is.
Short that up a bit.
Do we have a total of how many single family connections we have in town? I'm gonna play with the math. I just want to see.
Kevin actually.
What we're talking.
Kevin actually, him and I, when he was in today, he actually started a spreadsheet, she when he was working on this process. And now that we've got this dialed in, what the logic is, we were saying today, we could tweak that so that it's appropriate and, and literally pass it out to you guys, so you could play with the numbers yourself.
Cause that would be great. Cause I think that's where my brain goes, just.
Yes.
Doing accounting is like, okay, how can we, like, and I don't mean to do this to developers or anyone else, but can we give single family a break until we figure out the full depth of.
Well, and with the radio read project finishing up, we're gonna get some really great data coming in for the winter, and that's gonna be your lowest rates that we'll see.
Oh, absolutely.
Is gonna be coming in through the winter. So that would be our lowest flow rates. Right now, we're kind of guessing by what Melody has seen throughout the entire year and trying to average it and trying to get that number.
Yeah, it's really hard to come up with that. It's really hard to calculate it when you have, don't have the data to do it.
And we're also thinking that when the meters, actually people start seeing how much they're using, cause they can make their own login account if they want to, it's probably gonna drop 20 to 30%. So your income is probably actually gonna decrease.
That's another concern that we have to have, is that when people start to get sticker shock in the middle of summer, when they're. That's another concern that we have to have is that when people start to get sticker shock in the middle of summer, when they're, you know, irrigating their lawns or whatever, our revenue is going to go down. So our, our costs to operate are not going to go down. So, um, I, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Scafidi. So what I would like also before the next meeting, you mentioned a few things and just make sure that some of the other ways that you're coming up with the, to.
Has to go into the enterprise.
It has to be able to work into the enterprise.
I know. And I understand the enterprise and that's the frustration of government. I, it really is aggravating that you can have a surplus here, but if this one's under, that's the, the worst. And I guess I'm trying to figure out is, the pre-treatment plant, I understand it has to stay in that enterprise, but that's also a capital improvement, which I think it's just frustrating that that would deplete everything to then create a rate increase. So it's just.
But, but it's not, but to be clear, we just started spending our cash recently. So we borrowed a million dollars this past, since January of 2024. We have spent $1,997,000 on the pre-treatment that we've paid for. $1 million of that was a loan that we received. So it did increase though our operating costs by about $8,000 a month for the payment itself. So that, that, that right away spiked our operating costs. And then we did receive $750,000 through that period in grant money as well. So we've just recently hit our cash and it's, it's being hit quickly right now.
Okay.
And the fact is, we need to get the pre-treatment plant over the finish line and start charging Melvin the appropriate cost. And the sooner we do that, the better. So that's why this JVA report is super important. And, and it's, it's all been in concept, a great thing for the town of Alpine. We just got to get it behind us.
I know. And I guess for me is like, I want to pass it. I just want to table single family till like, we're up and running and we see it.
But that's going to be, I think we're going to have to make some assumptions. So that's going to be the tough part, but I, I hear what you're saying. I, I would suggest that it, if it passes on first reading, that we take the next couple of weeks to work with Monica and, and ask the appropriate questions.
Think it would be helpful.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'll wait a minute.
Well, then we'll absolutely take that time to work with her and make sure we have it dialed in and ask these questions. But it's been a huge lift to get all this here, because our goal is to get this passed by the end of the year so the first bills can come out in January. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine. Thank, I, I apologize. And in truth, if you guys think it would be helpful, I, I know, I know none of you want another meeting, but if you think it would be helpful to have a meeting where we could really sit and talk about this, I think the last time when we tried to do it, none of us, it, it all just wasn't where it's at right now. And I think we could have a really good work session on it and really do, you know, do those numbers. We could have that. We could play with the numbers right here with, as a team. I think it, it could be positive, but that's completely.
Let's see what happens over the next couple of weeks before the next meeting and see how much, everyone's got their homework and we'll see if we can get it over the finish line at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have something to add? Anyone? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard Johnson speaking up over there. On this particular thing, go ahead. Anyone want to come up? You have one? On, on the rates? You have a comment on the rate study? Okay, go ahead and hit the, hit the red button or hit the button there to turn that on if you don't mind. And tell us your name.
Troy Johnson, resident Alpine and business owner.
Yep.
Right now, my water bill is pretty high. And you're going to up it another 25% because somebody, you, the town decided to pay for somebody's pre-treatment plant? I don't get that. Why did, why am I going to pay for somebody's piece of equipment? Why should I? I don't send you bills when I buy equipment. The town's never offered to buy my stuff. Why should I buy somebody else's? That's, to me, that's BS. I completely disagree with it. The other thing I think is nobody's here because there's no public, where, where do you send out public info? That used to be in the paper and everything else and in our news, in our P O boxes. We don't get anything nowadays saying what's coming up. Rate increases? I've talked to 15 people probably. Nobody knew anything about it. Nothing. I think that's crap. I don't think it's very good for the town for communication, because I don't think any residents here would agree to pay for Melvin's pre-treatment plant. I don't agree with it. I don't think I pay enough. I think I pay plenty for water and sewer on four different, three different lots. I don't think I should pay more. I think it's outrageous. 25% because, for water and sewer. So my bill's probably going to go up about 50 to 75 bucks a month.
You mean for all your properties?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's outrageous.
So I, I hear what you're saying.
No, I don't, I mean, I don't, where, where's the public input?
So just.
And if you pass, hold it, and if you pass this on first reading, then it pretty much, you guys are going to push it right on through. I don't think you should pass it on first reading until you let public know, until there's, you know, public people here, because nobody knows about it. Or why? I'm done. I mean, go ahead.
So, uh, I hope you hear what we're saying here. We're going to take the next two weeks and we want to evaluate this. This has been brought forward by staff and our goal is not to have this, the, the citizens pay for the pre-treatment plant. So we want to evaluate what the actual costs are and make sure that when we pass this, I don't know if there's going to be an increase or not.
So why approve it?
And to answer your question about why aren't people here? I don't know why people are here, but.
Nobody knows.
Okay, but is that necessarily our fault? Like, do they want us to go door to door and knock on the door and tell them?
P O box, I mean, you put it in the mail. They used to put it in the mail every time. It was always in our P O boxes.
That, that's a huge amount of money that it, that right there is going to increase your rates right there.
No, it won't, because, not if you do it right. Cause the post office is pretty, usually pretty good about it.
Costs 70 cents for every time we mail something.
And if, like I say, why pass it at all? Why pass it on first reading until you know for sure what's going to happen?
Well, and maybe we can text out or put a flyer up at the post office.
See, and the other issue is I can't hear crap. I'm sorry for the language, but the speakers aren't loud enough or something. I can't, I, mumble, mumble, mumble. I can hear you and I can hear Jeremy once in a while and maybe Shay every once in a while. But I, and I, hard of hearing, I know, that's why I stood up here, but I don't, something's going to happen on speakers.
Uh, we don't have speakers.
Okay, then you may need them. I don't know.
Well, if, if you'd like, I will invite you to sit up here as close as possible.
I try.
And, and, but we're trying to be as transparent as possible. We, you know, things like this get put in the newsletter. We put everything out on Facebook and, you know.
So I'm not, so there are a lot of people not on Facebook, not on, not on the internet and not reading the newsletter all the time.
So happy to do this.
In the newspaper.
Count on you to help get the word out so we can fill this room and we'll listen to what people say about it.
Okay, where's the flyers then? I mean, put flyers on businesses. They used to do that. I mean, the town actually made it an effort to let the public know what was going on. Not just, oh, it's here in this newsletter or it's here somewhere else. You guys need to look for it. How come the town don't publicly announce it somehow?
Yes.
I mean, because.
Troy, have you signed up for our?
Text alerts?
Text, text alert?
Text, yeah. I get texts, but not from the town. We've signed up for something and we still don't get anything.
So we, we have a program that started before I was even mayor, but it was suggested by me where you could get text alerts, what's going on at the town. So you can, you can sign up for that. That's a great way. We also, you can sign up for emails. So have you been getting the text alerts?
No.
We haven't got anything.
Okay, so I hear what you're saying and we want to make sure people know about this.
I can see a lot of people get that.
I, we're trying.
My opinion is, there aren't too many people here that got the news that they're going to get 25% increase in their water and sewer. Cause the people I talked to, not, anybody knew about it.
Okay, so I don't agree that we have to draw people in. We're doing the best we can right now to let people know this is coming up. We post the agendas, we put it out there. So I'm open to your ideas as far as how to let people know what's going on, but.
We need to find a better solution.
Okay, we, we hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
But I, and I do disagree with approving this on the first reading. Just until you guys know, if you're not going to have a rate increase, if you end up no rate increase, why go through all the troubles?
There's a lot more covered in this ordinance than just that one part of it. So it's my suggestion, we do pass it on first reading and, and and we keep working forward and if, if we come up with questions, concerns, we need to figure it out before the second reading. But it's my suggestion, we move forward. So, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Troy.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just to address Troy, at least when it's concerned with the, sorry, the water rates? The, the water rates are just for the water department. So the water rates, they're not going to fund the pre-treatment plant.
Well, town of Alpine.
My, my. I'm sorry?
Why is the town of Alpine paying for the pre-treatment?
We are. I'm sorry?
I heard an million dollar loan.
From the town of Alpine.
I don't, actually, at this point, I don't want to rehash the pre-treatment plant. I mean, it goes back since 2018. Pre, previous administration went there and, you know, it was, it's something that, we're trying to have this baby. We've been pregnant for a long time now and, and the sooner we have this baby, it's going to help out the town, but.
It's been a good secret, cause I just heard about it yesterday.
The pre-treatment plant?
Yeah. I did first time.
Okay.
Heard that the town was paying for it for a business.
Yeah. It goes, it goes back quite a ways and I don't want to rehash the history. I want to just move on. Yeah, but this is a great opportunity for, if you want to get information on the pre-treatment plant and the history and everything, then I suggest you contact Monica and come in and talk to her and she'll give you all the history on it. We're going to try to work on the, the rates and the increase if we decide there needs to be increase before the next meeting. And if you want to be a part of that, I suggest you come in and talk to Monica about that and look at the numbers once we have them together. And then you can make sure that you tell all your friends and fill this room. And then we'll be able to have people come and, and give us their opinion. But we appreciate you coming and hopefully you coming up and mentioning this will help get the word out. So appreciate it. All right. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of ordinance number 2025-013 utility rate ordinance on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Um, are you abstaining? Did you vote? I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, so passed three to one on first reading. And now we open it up to public comment. Troy, this is a whole nother opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to make another public comment, you're more than welcome to. Okay, and we appreciate you coming.
Patricia McQuade, resident of Alpine. I received Monica's letter after the meeting two weeks ago. And it kind of went through the process she went through for the school property. But I still have a couple of questions. I, you know, should have asked back then, but I was kind of flabbergasted it. Anyway, town council, I mean, town legal counsel, Mr. Sanderson said when he heard about the excavation, that he told you they weren't supposed to move a single rock. And I'm wondering, what did you do after the town's legal counsel told you they shouldn't move a single rock?
That is a misrepresentation of the conversation. Mr. Sanderson and I talked about this whole process in advance of them being told that they had fulfilled their obligations of the lease. And he said to me prior to that, I said, it is so important that we dot every I across every T, because I, there's so much public pushback that I personally don't want to take the flak for this. That was his nice conversation. And he said, don't let them move one rock until it's effective. That's what he said to me.
Okay.
It was not after they moved a rock.
Okay.
Before.
Okay, so, so before they did any excavation.
Yes.
You were told they shouldn't do that until everything else was done.
Correct.
Okay. But they did. They did it before the town council voted to approve their business plan, which was part of the.
The town council did not require, was not required to accept their business plan officially. It was just.
And who told you that?
What, what, it doesn't say in the lease that it was required to be accepted.
A couple of months ago, I asked at town council if they had submitted their business plan. And the mayor said they submitted one, but he told them they needed to make changes.
Yes.
So that tells me that they couldn't just submit a business plan and that was it.
The mayor reviewed it and I forwarded it to council because he, he thought it, it looked sufficient. The day they sent it to me.
Okay, so then I'll go to, so nobody gave them approval to excavate?
No.
Okay, so then I go to, if they didn't need approval from the council to offer their business plan, why was voting on that put on the agenda on October 7th?
It's very similar, it's, it's our process of being transparent. Historically, previous administrations just put those things as communication items at the bottom of agendas. They were passed out to council or emailed and they, when they were notated. Here, I do not, if you notice, I don't have that communication. Everything is on their agenda and it's attached and it becomes part of the official record. So similar to accepting the master plan and those things, I ask them to accept them. I, I want them to accept them because I, I want everybody to know that it's going on.
Okay, but you issued them a building permit before that vote?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just wondering if all the votes you take here at town council are just for show? Have, has everything been decided before you come here? And, you know, it doesn't really matter. I mean, what if, say you gave them a, an, a, a building permit before they started, they started construction, you said in your email to me, on the 7th. So had the council voted against approving their plan?
We would have issued a stock work order if, if, if it didn't, if there was some big problem. But I, my understanding was they just needed to submit it and I could then check that off. That was just my understanding of the process. I then added it to the agenda because I knew it was such a, 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 it's a trigger issue in the town of Alpine. And I want to make sure that everybody sees it. I want to make sure that everybody gets it if they want it.
We came to hear about the vote.
It was.
And it was already, it was already decided. So I'm just saying that I think, I think before do approvals like that, they should be voted for in public. And that's what, you know, Mr. Sanderson's not here, but I how familiar you are with our town here, but you know, I'm just wondering about voting on things that you've already made decisions on.
Thank you, Pat.
Any other public comment? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. All right. Thank you.
We could have kept those other things on the agenda.